Alright, welcome to, I believe this is study session number thirteen. Today, we're gonna be covering, we're gonna be, well, keep going on the security aspects of Kubernetes. We're covering, um, we're gonna go quickly through the cluster roles, since it's pretty much the same thing as our back role based access control that we did last week. Uh, the only difference is gonna be the scope. Uh, cluster roles affect all namespaces on the cluster, while our backs are usually namespace defined. Uh, then we're gonna jump through the service, um, service accounts and security context, and if we have time, we'll go through there. But also, we're gonna cover image security in there. And if we have time, network policies. I have not done network policies. So we're gonna be all learning together on those. I know, um, I know PJ did them last week, I believe. Uh, so I got a little bit of knowledge, but hey. We all, what do you, what do you used to say? Building the plane as we fly? So let's go ahead and jump into it. As always, feel free to chime in, you know? Better than we learn, we don't learn in silos. And we can bounce ideas off each other. Can everybody see the screen, by the way?
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, so for the first question on this slide. Let's see here. Expect existing cluster role and role bindings that have been created in this cluster. Um, I saw Derek, I believe, uh, Derek is not here, but FM, do you wanna? Do you wanna like jump in and see if you can answer this question? How would inspect the cluster rules and role bindings? Or anybody?
Would it be kubeget?
Yep, can do that. But that is just gonna give us what we, like, what cluster roles we have and role bindings. Who the K get? Cluster rules. There's a lot of clusters. Cluster role bindings.
Is there another way to filter or?
Uh, yes. If there's a specific one that you're looking for, we can always grab it. That would be the best way. Um. Yeah, so. It's quite a few here. Let's see what they're asking us. And they are gonna ask us how many cluster roles we see defined in the cluster. So for that, I always do. The git command, as you said earlier. And what we can do is we can pipe that over to wordcount dash L. That will give us the number of lines, and we're always gonna subtract one for the for the title or the name and role. That's not actually a binding or a cluster role. So let's go ahead and. Okay, cluster roles. So we got seventy-one here, minus one gets seventy. So that we got seventy cluster roles on this, um, cluster. And they want us to do the same thing with the role bindings. So yeah, just do wordcount dash L. Yeah, we got fifty-five. Does that make sense?
Okay, hold up, show me where you are. Okay. Okay, I didn't see the, okay, I didn't scroll down to see, see what you wrote there. Okay, I got you.
The important part here is the wordcount dash L. That's usable, that's useful in other scenarios too. Anytime you need to see how many of an item is listed. Uh, just do a wordcount dash L, it will tell you how many lines are present. So, alright, what namespace is a cluster admin cluster role part of? Uh, this, we don't really have to even look at anything here, because as I mentioned earlier, the cluster roles are gonna be namespace, the namespace, they're gonna be over all namespaces. So, uh, answer here is cluster roles are cluster wide and not part of any namespace. What user groups are the cluster? Cluster admin role bound to. So for that, we need to inspect the binding for cluster admin. So let's do. Want to just, let's go for a cluster binding that has cluster admin in it. Group. Cluster. Admin. And the, we got one here. Have a few here that actually. Cluster admin. Let's inspect them. Then we're gonna be K describe. Cluster. Well, another complete. Uh, this one is system group, the group is system masters, as you can see there, the subject. So just so you know, understand how to read this, Natasha, I know you weren't here. It's the same way with role, role access, role based access control. Um, that here we have the role, or in this case, the cluster role up here that is specified. And you can see it by the name. And then down here, the subject is gonna be the group or the user that is gonna be bound to the cluster admin role. So in this case, the group, anybody in the group, system masters are gonna have the permissions of the cluster admin.
Got it.
Hmm, next up, oh, so let's go ahead and actually. Let's look at these other one. I am curious. What are those? These are also cluster admin. These are service accounts, not user. It's asking for us for user slash groups. These are service accounts that it's bound to. Assume the same thing for the other one. Yep. So let's go ahead and say system masters. Okay. And what level of permission does cluster admin role grant? Uh, so here, we're trying to find out the permissions granted for the cluster admin. And to do so, let's describe the, the role itself. Okay, describe. It's gonna be a cluster role. Cluster admin. Let's see what we got. So, the way you would read this is if you remember wildcard means everything. So in this case, we have access to all resources. And on those resources, the verbs is the action you're gonna do. You can do anything on those resources in any, it's not specifying a, a name. So, any name. Any URLs or, yeah, it's not specified there. So, this, you pretty much have permission over everything. You can do anything on that cluster. Um, so it's gonna be the last option here. And a new user, Michelle, joined the team. She will be focusing on the notes in the cluster, create and acquire cluster roles and role bindings, so she gets access to the nodes. So, the first thing we're gonna wanna do here is we're gonna wanna create the cluster role. And then we're gonna do a role binding, binding Michelle. And I'm assuming they already created the user Michelle. And we can see that if we go into, or let's just do a cat. Now, let's do them. This is where I usually check, the user already exists. We keep config. And you can see down here, the, we have a username, Michelle, already specified. So let's get out of here. This is gonna be in your dot cube slash config folder. Well, it's a file inside of the dot cube directory. Um. So, let's create that role. Was the permission that they wanted us to have? She would be focusing on the moves. Create the required, so she gets access to nodes. So, I'm gonna create a role that allows Michelle to do anything with the nodes. Uh, for that, we could do K. Create. And this, actually, I learned this from Terrell. Before I was doing these declaratively, which are creating a file. Now, you can use, if you're doing the, the test, you can use the documentation, uh, just search up cluster role. Oh, if you do forget it. I think it's under here. View control F. And cluster. All cluster roles. And there's examples here. So here's an example of a role. And here's an example of cluster role. You can copy this and adjust it to whatever the test question is asking for. Because remember, you do have access to the documentation when you are taking a test. So, let's go back over here. This is what I learned from Terrell is we can just do it, uh, imperatively. Okay, create. Cluster. You're stuck. Stuck on. Waiting on it till there goes, alright. Cluster role. That's the role. And you can do a dash dash help to see what are your options. And yeah, so. We want the verb, want any action on the resource, I believe, yep, resource. And our resource is gonna be nodes. So. See, was there anything else I need? Look, I'm forgetting something. Little part we do very good. Alright, let's go with that. Works in a cluster nodes, right? Let's do that, and then we'll go from there. So, K create cluster role. And let's go with resource. Our resource is gonna be nodes. And then. Let's see if it all completes. That's not. I feel it's not supposed to be capitalized. We can check, always check up here. Uh, they wrote theirs, pods is not capital, so I'm gonna go ahead and not capitalize it here. Nodes. And then verb is gonna be, I'm gonna put asterisk. As it can, you can do anything. K create. Cluster role, we've gotta give the cluster role a name. And delete specify. You always wanna check if the question specified a name. In this case, I don't think they did. So I'm just gonna create one, uh, gonna be node admin. Nodes, verb, everything. So let's go ahead and create that and always check your work. Uh, let's do a describe. Cluster. Role, node admin. And as you can see, we have, we can do anything on the nodes. Next up, they wanna to grant these permissions to Michelle, so we have to create a role binding for Michelle. So for that, let's go ahead and do K create. Role. Cluster role. Binding. There's the shelf again. Doing this one, we're gonna need the name, of course. Node. Admin. Binding. Okay. So we wanna do user in this case for Michelle. Uh, as you can see here, you can do service accounts, there's also groups. Uh, and we also need to specify the cluster role that's gonna be getting binded. So let's go ahead and do cluster role first. And that was node admin, and then user. It's gonna be Michelle. A lot of the stuff is case sensitive, so keep that in mind. Make sure you don't use the wrong Michelle, because of the capital letter. And that looks good to me, so let's go ahead and create it. Okay, describe. Uh, cluster. Binding. And we're looking for node admin, binding. Man, we can see there, not the cluster role node admin is binded to the user Michelle. And we can also check this by doing a as you can, we, we said, um, she should be able to do anything on the nodes. So let's do a K get nodes as the user. Michelle. And as you can see, did give it to us. If we were to do K get pods. As you can see, it gives us an error. And it says forbidden. So, the permissions are set up correctly. You can go ahead and do, give it a check. And you just wanna get into the habit of, um, double checking your work. Yeah, you might, you, you may be fully confident that you got it correctly, but when you go to, um, you might just be asking for like one extra, one extra thing in there that you didn't do correctly. So when you double check it, you know, for sure, like, hey, it is doing exactly what the question is asking for it. Then you can be a little bit more confident in your answer. Uh, Michelle's possibilities are growing, and now we'll be responsible for storage as well. Create a quiet cluster roles and cluster all by to allow her access to storage. Um, and this tells us down here. Um, what resources she needs to have access to. So. We're gonna have to create, uh, as you can see, um, it's telling us to create a new cluster role. Um, I thought about just, um, adding these permissions to the other, the node admin cluster role. But we have to create a new one called, uh, storage admin, just make sure, and that's what I'm saying, like, make sure that you're following directions. But you might end up having those right permissions, but if the name's not right, it's not gonna, you're not gonna get credit for it. Alright, so. Again, we're gonna do this imperatively, so okay, create. Uh, cluster role. Install. Let me just copy. Little molecule on this bullet. Get those errors, cuz I'm working on a Mac, and then this is actually a Windows PC that I'm connected to. Alright. Cluster roles, storage admin. And the resources that we need access to is persistent volumes and storage classes. So let's do, just dash resources. System volumes. Sources. Think we can specify both of them in the same one. And is it asking for a specific? So not asking for a specific permission, so I'm just gonna grant all permissions over these resources. And the way we do that is the verb verb or action that we can do is gonna be everything wildcard. And, uh, remember, if you don't put these quotations, it's gonna, it's gonna read your system and it's gonna just do an LS. Uh, everything in the, in your LS, in your current directory is gonna get populated into this verb. So make sure you keep it as a string by putting the quotations around it. Uh, K create cluster role, storage admin, and the resources, and we can do anything to those resources. It's good to me. Alright, they created. So, let's describe it. Cluster role. Storage admin. Perfect. I like it. Alright, so next up, we gotta create a role binding called Michelle storage admin. And bind Michelle to storage admin role. Alright, we've done this before. But we can just use the same one, K create. Here, and we're just gonna change a few things. The user can say the same, the role gotta change to storage admin. And then the role binding, they have a specific name, they wanted names, so we're gonna change that one. Okay. That looks good to me. How does that look to you guys?
Yeah, that looks good.
Okay, go ahead and create it. Alright, that it took you, okay, this, we always wanna double check, describe. Cluster role binding. And it was Michelle. Alright. Okay, so it's bound to the right cluster role. Okay, so to check that we have the right permissions, as you saw earlier, we couldn't do uh, K get pods. In this case, we wanna do a K get persistent volumes. Let's do that. They get PV. We just for persistent ones. Let's do. Well, it's only gonna be, it's gonna, oh, so is this, it is cluster role, so it's actually not gonna be specific to the namespace, so let's do a we actually don't have any, but I think the comment should, it should still give us an error. So let's do K get PV. Well, in this case, it's not gonna give us, it should tell us no resources found. Let me see if we have at least storage classes. Alright, so we have a storage class, so we can check with that. And same as I command as Michelle. Alright, so we're able to get that. And if we K get pods as Michelle. Nope, still error, so. That looks good to me. Let's go ahead and let him check it. Alright, so that's the last question. Um, we went over the cluster rules here. Uh, how we configure them. Uh, the main thing to remember, the difference between our back and cluster roles is that cluster roles are for the whole cluster. Therefore, they oversee all namespaces. If we were to do the same command that we just did earlier. Uh, K get storage classes as Michelle. And we just, uh, add a dash A. It still works. Uh, if it was a cluster role and we tried to do it in a different namespace, it would give us a permission error. So, just, um, just look out for the difference between cluster roles and role binding, or in our back. Uh, with that said, any questions on cluster roles? Alright. Keep it moving. And next up, we got our service accounts. So service accounts are gonna be your accounts that are set up for automation or for your systems, uh, maybe a command that you're running. Uh, it's pretty much for a non-user, not, non-person account to, to give that entity or that object in Kubernetes, uh, permissions. Uh, that's the, the main difference is gonna be with service accounts, they're used by non-users. While your regular accounts like Michelle earlier, that's gonna be a user putting in those commands manually. Uh, think about it like if you were to have, uh, an application like Jenkins. Uh, Argo CDs are, is probably the best, a better example that runs pipelines for you. Uh, you as a user don't, you don't sit there and actually put in those commands. Argo CD does it for you, and therefore, Argo CD would require a service accounts to be able to have the right permissions to do so. Alright. So, how many service accounts exist in default namespace? As always, we do a K get. SA is the shorthand, don't capitalize like I just did. And we got two right there. Default and dev. Okay. And something that I should also mention is, um, the default service account, anytime you create a namespace, the default service account is gonna be automatically generated. And then any pod that you create in the namespace is gonna have the default service accounts added to it. Okay. Let's go ahead and what is the secret token used by the default service accounts? So, the tokens, um, I haven't mentioned that yet. So the way the service accounts get their authorization to Kubernetes is through tokens. If you remember, there, you have authentication and authorization. Authentication is who can access something, authorization is what they can do. So, in this case, uh, the way okay, maybe that's, that might be another topic. But, uh, in this case, well, what I mean when I say the token is gonna be is gonna be your authentication into the Kubernetes. Uh, the It's gonna be your authentication into the Kubernetes, uh, the service account is gonna be talking to the Qube API. Therefore, the Qube API needs to know. What service account it is and to verify that, and it does that with the token. Anytime you create. A service account. Okay, so actually, this has changed, um. When you create a service account, the token is no longer automatically generated. There is a token API, I believe. That does all the token transactions for you. And in the case that you need an actual token. You will need to manually generate it now. Uh, previously, uh, in the previous versions that of Kubernetes. Anytime you created a token or a service account. Uh, token was generated and then put into a secret. And then you were able to use, add that secret to, um, the pods to have it use. That service account instead of the default one. But yeah, let's go ahead and, um, keep going into this and you'll see what I mean. Uh, what is a secret token used by the default service account? And we can do that by. Let's do a. Okay, describe. So the, as you can see, there is no token. Yeah, so that's, that's what's changed, um, they. You, used to be a token, but now it's not generated. So none is the answer. We just deploy a dashboard application, inspect the deployment, what is the image used by this deployment? So let's go ahead and do a K. Describe. Doesn't need to pull it out here, so. Let's see, what we got going here? What's the image used there? So the image. We've done this before, just look at the image. And if you ever get a configuration that's like really long and you having a hard time to find the, finding the image used. You know, let's grab it. Image. Man, here's our image, ECR dot IO. Uh, wait for the deployment to be ready, to see if it's ready. Well, I think it actually says it here somewhere. One desire, one update, one total, one available. Let's see, seeing. I mean, it is saying that we desire one and we have one. But you can always just do a K get pods. To confirm that that part is ready. Misspelled that. Yep. All good, it is running. Okay, what is the state of dashboard have? Oh, so they want us to. Come up here, let's grab the dashboard. Um. That is forbidding user system service account default. Cannot list the resources, pods, and the API group, the space default. So the service account does not have the right permissions to the pods to list them. So let's come back out here, um, so they're asking, yeah, so it's failed. What type of account does a dashboard application use to query the Kubernetes API? Well. It's gonna be a service account. And we can see that here. System service account. That it's using. So. The service account there. And which account does the dashboard application use to query the Kubernetes API? And we saw it here, it is use the default, uh, there's another way you can see that. Service account, I don't think it's on the deployment. If we grab. Service. We get nothing, so I believe it is on the pod themselves that we have to check. We describe. Pods. Um, yeah, it's a perfect. Uh, see, the service account here is gonna be default. We just give you different options to find your information, just gotta remember one of them for the test. Alright. Inspect the dashboard application identified for the service come mounted on it. Um, well, we, we just saw it, it's gonna be the default one. And, oh, so I guess I should show you this. Cuz they wanna see. It mounted, so let's do a K. Scribe. Pod. Let's see if I can find. Service account. Okay, here it is. Mount variable service accounts. And where's this mount coming from? From QB API access. Oh, here it is, uh, QB access. And the config map is gonna be. Cube root CA cert. Okay, where does this lead to? So let's check our, our config map here. Okay, describe. Yeah. Ah, it's not gonna tell us what I wanted to tell us. Okay. But you. Service account. This is gonna be default. Will location service have conditions available within the pod? Um, is yes, guys, what location is available, it's gonna be right here. Varron Secrets Kubernetes dot IO. Uh, so it's gonna be this guy right here, Varron Secrets. I'm assuming this QB API access config map is generated by the. It's called the Token API, let me look it up here. Token API. Token request API. Secrets. Read later. All the token request API directly. We're using. The command, so this is the command that you would use to create the service account token now. Uh, you wouldn't, it doesn't automatically create it, you just, you have to use the command to. Manually generate it. Doesn't tell me what I wanted to know is. Well, I'm gonna do that research another time. We're just gonna keep going through this for the time being. Alright, the application need a service account with the right permission to be created, to authenticate to Kubernetes. The default service account is limited access, create a new service account named Dashboard SA. So let's go ahead and K. Done this before, could create SA. And then the name, Dashboard. And it doesn't tell us any permissions that we need to add to it, so. Let's just create a dashboard SA account. It is created. It says right here, so we don't really need to double check it. Alright, we just had an additional permission to new create dashboard SA. And so the permissions are set up as RBAC permissions, uh, we did those earlier, so we can always, uh, K. Describe the. I believe we can just describe the. Let's say dashboard, let's see, let's see, we'll get here. Oh, no, we cannot. So is there? A role binding? Oh. Binding. Pods, so let's see what this does. Okay, so yeah, here it is. It's given the service account that we just had, the Dashboard SA service account. In the default namespace, as I mentioned earlier, with role bindings, they have, they are namespace specific. And is giving it the permissions of pod reader, so let's see what that role is, can you describe? Role. Uh, reader. And we can get, watch, and list any pods. As you can see, there's no resource name specified, so it's gonna be any. Excuse me. Okay. Uh. That's pretty much what they want us to inspect. And enter the access token in the URL of the dashboard, click load dashboard, so access token. So this is where we have to, oh, they gave us that command. Okay. That's the command that we also have in here, if you ever are looking for it on the test. Uh, we saw it here somewhere, on there. This is under configure, secret configurations. Where was it? Here it is, Q C T L create token. And there was specified the service account that we wanted to create a token for. So in this case, they give it to us, so I'm just gonna. Might use their generosity, copy it. Okay, create token dashboard SA. Here it gives me the token. So to use this token, you know, it's. Don't overcomplicate it, just copy it and paste it into. Here where they ask you for token, paste. And load dashboard, as you can see, that does work. It is running in the default namespace, tells that P. All of this stuff. Refresh it. It's gone, we have to put the token in again. And we can load it, so. What it's gonna ask us to do next is automate this, so we don't have to do this, pretty much we wanna change this. That it looks at the other, the, I say, the dashboard, I say, account that we just created. We don't want it to look at this by default. So let's go back in here, um, let's click, okay. Uh. Edit the deployment to change. Change the default service account, or just change the service account from default to dashboard, so. This kind of problem, okay. We just need to specify on that deployment, okay? I don't remember how you do this, so let's go ahead and check the documentation. And we need to look at the service accounts. There was a link, the service account. The service account, blah, blah, blah. RTU service account. Sign service account to the cloud. Can we assign, I wanna see if we can assign it to a deployment. So let's search for deployment. And just, um. Sips. Let's check that. And on the, here's on the pod. Well, here, um, I mean, this is different, but, uh. We can use this cuz it's, um, under the containers. Deployments have a container spec, so we should be able to use this. Um. And just to double check, it will be on the same level as containers. So let's go over to here. And we're gonna edit that deployment. Spec. As a container. The spec is a continuing. And we now specify a service, so. Under spec. We don't wanna add it right here. It'll be service account name, I believe it was. Service account name. Um. Service account name is gonna be dashboard, I see. Okay, let's see if it picks that. Alright. And let's describe our deployment. And you can see here, our service count is listed, alright, good stuff. And come on here. If we refresh it, as you remember earlier, we refreshed till we got back to this screen. Refresh it, and it shows us our. Our pods. Currently, there's two of them because one has not been terminated, I believe one has to be ter- yup, there it goes. Alright, so we're good here. And of course, on the test, you probably will not have access to. That service account, or the start. That service account, or this, this dashboard, so. To go ahead and describe the deployment to make sure that the service account is listed there, under the pod template. So we are good to go. So just to go over again, the service accounts are gonna be your accounts that. Either the pod needs to be able to access certain Kubernetes, um, um, Kubernetes objects. Or even if you have an application, you may need a service account to access, uh, certain things in Kubernetes. It's gonna be your account that is used by a non-human person. To interact with Kubernetes. And they would need their token, uh, cuz they still need to authenticate to Kube APIs, everything else. Uh, yeah, um, any questions, uh, service accounts and their use? Okay?
Nope.
Let's keep on going. Sam, are you getting all of this?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, um, I'm observing it, so this is in the, uh. Is this in the securities, I mean, uh, this is after the cluster role section?
Uh, yes, so, yes, so the, this is the next section after cluster role. Uh, we did just, just went over the service accounts. And. Did you have any question as far as, um, I know it's a lot of information. But as far as like the service accounts and what they're used for?
Um, no, would, uh, the service accounts also be used for plugins? I wanna say that they, that's what they would be used for.
Yeah, plug, any plugins, anything that needs access to the Kube API will have to have a service account. Cuz he has to authenticate, um. Any third-party, uh, applications too. They will have to have a service comes to them.
Yeah, so now, as far as managing the, the tokens for a given service account. This is something that you would do at the time of. Connecting, uh, a given plugin or given, uh, external application?
Good question, um, so as of, um, Kubernetes. Version 1.2.4, I believe. You, we no longer manage the, the tokens. There is a separate API called the Token Request API that does all of that for you. You still have that option of manually creating tokens, but that's been taken away from the user. And now you just create a service account and just know that the Token Request API is gonna manage those tokens for each service account for you.
Got it, got it.
Of course, you still wanna know that these tokens exist in case that you need to troubleshoot. Uh, maybe you have any some, I don't know what, what are the frequently issue that happen with the Token Request API? Maybe he's giving it the wrong token, and you can always test by manually creating a token. And seeing if whatever you try and, the application or the app. Whatever is trying to access, if you can access it through that token, the issue is probably with the service account. Alright, next up. We're gonna be going over image security, so the image security, what they're talking about is gonna be your Docker images, uh. You, when you pull those, you wanna make sure that you pull in the right image, right, cuz you don't. I think there was a recent issue where. In, uh. What is that, uh, the place that everybody stores their code, what is it called again? In GitHub, like people were uploading, uh, wrong code, malicious code into GitHub and. People were pulling it down, thinking that it's a legitimate code, and they had some malware in there or whatever, what that. So, um, you always wanna confirm whether it is through certificates that you're, uh, downloading the right stuff. Uh, but even a better solution to that is having a private repository for your images where. You, all the images in that private repository are already tested, they're. The public does not have access to them. So we're gonna be looking at how you can connect your, uh, private repositories, because by default. Uh, Kubernetes is gonna be accessing the Docker I O repositories, I believe. And, yeah, you don't wanna. If you, you have to change that in order to use the private ones, um. Alright, so we'll jump into it. Something else that I should mention is the way that the, the structure of how it pulls, how it reads an image. Um, wish I could type it, so it's like, it's almost like a URL. Without the dot com or whatever you wanna add to that, it's gonna be your registry. Slash the user that is then accessing the registry, and then slash the image that is being accessed. That's how Kubernetes is gonna read the pool. Uh, so you wanna change, of course, the registry. And, uh, if you have multi-user, then you're gonna be also, you're gonna have to specify the. User account that's accessing that registry, but defaulted pools from Docker I O slash library. Library is gonna be your default user in Docker I O, and then the whatever image you're trying to pull. You know, it's hard to grasp that, cuz I don't have a visual representation. Now let me know if you have any questions.
Got you, got you.
Alright. It's taking a long time to load. Well, while waiting, any general Kubernetes questions? Or comments?
Is, uh, is, is Code Cloud still your preferred platform for practical experience right now?
Well, definitely, um, it's just the way they have it set up is. It's very, the labs are set up that. It tells you exactly, like it walks you through all of the different, uh, concepts in Kubernetes. And the study sessions, like, we, we don't get to see those in these. Cuz I don't wanna just play their content on YouTube, of course. But, uh, their actual videos, they just, they go over all of these concepts in a lot of detail. And it's a lot more than you can see in these labs. They, they really do a very good job explaining the different objects in Kubernetes and how they interact together. So I would highly recommend Code Cloud. I know for the test, uh, everybody always says that you should take your killer S H, uh, uh, study sessions. Yeah, I mean, it's an extra resource, most definitely take advantage of it, so. Um, outside of those two, I, I think that's all I need. Uh, there's also the Linux Foundation has a course as well, I have not had a chance to. Go through it, but I know, uh, Linux Foundation does amazing work as well, so you can check that out as well. Alright, let's do, and I'll jump into it. Alright, what secret type must we choose for the registry, Docker registry? Um, yeah, so for Docker registry, it's gonna be the Docker registry secret. Uh, but the way you can verify this, if you don't think that you remember during the test, you can always go and do a key. Let's do a K create, like, act like you're creating a secret. And next section is gonna be your secret type, and. As you can see here, Docker registry is the one that really fits here. Uh, we also have generic and TLS secrets, but that is not what they're asking for. So let's go ahead and select Docker registry. Welcome, T Mac. Alright, we have an application running on our cluster, let's explore it first. Uh, what image is the application using? Well, let's take a look at the, the application that we got going on here. When I say application, usually they're talking about deployment, so let's go ahead and do, um. Key get deployments, let's see what we got, so we got this world deployment, uh, let's just. They want us to see the image, so let's do a describe on it. That's what I meant to do, but I typed a whole different thing. Describe. And we'll make this even easier, just so you get used to using this command grep. It is very useful, so you don't have to parse through a whole bunch of information. Um, let's do a grep on the image. And as you can see here, our image is gonna be engine X Alpine. Alright. Now, of course, if you have multi, uh, multi-container pod, you'll have multiple images here. Then you'll have to probably, or you could do a. A before and after, and then see what con, what container it's part of. Uh, the before and after is gonna be your slash or dash capital B and dash capital A respectively. Uh, B for, but before, A for after, and then the number of, uh, lines. So I'm, I'm just gonna do an example here, if you wanted to do, uh, before dash B. And let's say five lines. And then look for the word image, so this is gonna show you five lines before the name image. And as you can see, the container is engine X here, so that'll help you out during the test as well. We're actually located at my private registry, so we, when I, we decided to use. Modification version application on the internal privilege, so. As I was mentioning earlier, um, the way these are read, so although it says, it says here just an image engine X Alpine. What it's doing, it is actually looking for the default values, and is plugging in Docker that I O. For the registry, and then the user is using library. Let's say the default user with default permissions, and then engine X. Dash Alpine. So we wanna change this. To use this registry instead. So what we'll need to do is we need to replace this Docker I O. With myprivateregistry.com. Colon 5000. I have not tested, we can, we can actually test this right now. Uh, believe we can keep library, I know this will work if you remove library, so if we were to do. And then, uh, the new registry that they want us to use, copy. Paste. Obviously, I didn't wanna search it, but, um. This would work, my private registry, I'll highlight it just so you can see exactly what I'm talking about. This would work, it would be able to find it, I'll, I will try it right now with library as the user. So we know exactly how this works and just test some of the kinks. Right? Yeah, um, it said to use modified version of the application from internal prep. If you, so, we need to edit this key. Edit deployment. And. And where it is specifying the image. The image down here. Let's go ahead. And paste that. Sync. Hmm, what I wanna try is. What if we have like, rarely? So. I'll do that, it has been edited. So the new registry is using now, is gonna be. Let's do, uh. Key described. And. We don't know which one it's, so let's do, key get pass first. The one that's coming back when it airs, the one that we just created, so. Key described. And. See. Hmm, okay. Let's see, doesn't want, maybe give us this one, no. We'll come back to that. Let's go ahead and edit that deployment. I'm gonna take out the library section for the user. And. This is from the registry. It might be checked, I might have to delete this. We replace that part. We're having an issue here where it's not reading that it's using the. The right, the right registry, so let's do a key get pods. Well, there's seven. Oh, I missed, missed that, okay. Yeah. Let's wait for that part to get removed. Missing part. Six, six. Okay, so it's already been removed, so let's check that, alright, good. Next. As you can see, it's still not running because. Obviously, we don't have the right credentials. Uh, the new pass created, the new image successfully running, no, they are not. Yeah, so we need credentials to access that, um. The registry, so we need to create a secret that. Has those credentials, so let's go ahead and do this imperatively, I believe, key. Great. Secret. And we want a Docker registry secret. Excuse me, and. Here are all the options that we can use for this, and they wanna specify username, password, server, and emails. So you can see how they're specified here, here's our server. Um, Docker, password Docker. Oh, so we don't want this server, and they're just, you know, what is it? This is the. This is the Kubernetes API server, so we need the docker server. The docker server location for the docker. So we're going to use all of these here. So let's go ahead and do docker. Username. Before I forget, I also need the name of this, of this secret. Next up. Password. Of course. It's not recommended to have passwords up like this. I'm not sure another way that you can do this. Specify the password for your. For your docker registry. You gotta remember the secrets are only going to be encoded. And not actually encrypted, so anybody can just decode them. Get their hands on it. Alright, next up. Docker server. Oh man, created secret, that's okay. We'll do a replace on this. And. Docker email. So because, so yeah. Uh, excuse the interruption for anybody on YouTube. I did get disconnected here, I am on the road, my laptop died, wasn't plugged into a. A socket that had power going to it. But we're back on and we left off creating the. Creating the secret here. So let's go ahead and finish that up. So what I want to do, because the place did fail, so. Let me go ahead and delete our current secret, K delete. Yeah, so we had created the secret. But I created it. Before we added the email, so let's go ahead and delete this current secret that we have. And it's going to be. Private reg, yep. And come up here. And we're just going to create a secret again. And it's good. Okay. Maybe describe. Secrets. And that we can figure Jason. Alright. So we'll go ahead and give it a check. And we're good. And lastly, once the secret is created, we have to tell. That pod or the deployment to use that secret on that image. When it pulls it. So to do so. Maybe it's just secret name, but let's check our documentation here. And we can do a docker. Secret. Well, so during the test, we won't have access to the discussions. So we have to look at the actual. The actual documentation here, so let's look at secrets here. And let me double check, Sim, can you still see the screen, okay?
Yep, 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 it's, I see you fine.
Perfect, that's good. Yes, fine. Well, that's. Or. Yeah. This is for pod, but I believe it's going to be the same, so we need to. Use this secret here. So, and the way we can also check this, it's something I learned. Because well, we can do a K explain. To find this out, so let's do a K explain. And we're looking for. Deployment. And underneath the deployment, we're looking at spec. So this is going to list all the different options for spec. That we're going to have. Leave next up, we're looking at template. And then for the. The pod spec. Sorry, spec. And here, we should have something. Secrets. Security context. We could look at securing context. Also, secure content is going to be what user or group the commands inside of the. But I ran nuts, that's not necessarily what we want. In this case, are we changing the credentials in order to use the, the new secret? In order for, uh. In order for us to run the. The container. We just need to specify. That the pod has to use this secret. To pull that image, well, here it is, image pull secrets. So that's what we're going to need, so let's go ahead and do an explain on that. Image. Secrets. And. Instead of that, we need a name. And just so we know how that looks inside. Let's do an image. Secrets search. Alright, here it is, pulling image from private. Pository. I'll create a secret. And here it is, image pool secrets and the name. And it's going to be on the same level as containers, so let's go ahead and copy that.
So it's in register credits?
What do you mean? Sorry, I missed that. Uh, oh, so the name here is going to be the name of our secret. Excuse me, is the red square here is, think about it as a placeholder, we have to change that to the name of our secret. So let's go back and. We're going to edit that deployment. And underneath the spec, as you saw, it was on the same level as container. Let's go ahead. And I'm going to want to paste that here. And fix this indentation. And change the name. And the reason that there's a dash there. That means we can, there's, it's a, it's going to be a. A list. So you can list different secrets, and that is in the case that you have multiple containers. And they have all pulling from, let's say they're pulling from different registries. Specify multiple registry secrets here. So that looks good to me, let's go ahead and. She's easy, it looks like it was edited. And we should be able to K. Get. Pods, dash W and watch these pods. Oh, they're already. They're already created. So as you can see, they got created as soon as I changed that over. So let's get out of this. Control C. So. When we specified that secret. It then uses that secret to access that, uh, that new, that private registry that we specified earlier. Use that secret to add those secrets to access that registry. And now that it's able to pull that image. It works, so as I wanted to check earlier. Before we close this out. Okay, edit. Let's edit that deployment again. And we want to take a look at. I want to change this. Image. To also have library in it. Let's see if it works after that. Because if you remember last time, I, I did change this, but. I had misspelled the. The actual registry. Well. Okay, so now it's edited, K get pods. Now we're getting error, so that is not correct. Let's edit that back.
If you go to the docs, I feel like in the docs, I thought I saw. The. That it reference. At the top, didn't say something about image pull. Oh, it's completely separated.
Private registry, so let's go over to the top. This is creating the secret.
Well, maybe I, maybe I saw, maybe I saw it whenever you were typing in the word pull. It says era image pull. That's the error you did.
Yep, and the error is definitely has to do, oh, you know what it is? We're actually specifying the username into a secret. So we don't have to say the username is, the username is not library. That's probably how it's failing. Yeah, so let's go ahead, uh, let's go finish this out. Going to get rid of this, um. So. And that should get us our pods back to normal. Looks good. And let's check it. Alright, perfect. And checking the pods are running, they are running, as you can see. Yeah, we're all set, so just to recap, this part is our. We went over the image secrets and how we would configure our Kubernetes to pull images. From a private registry versus using docker io, which is a public registry. Or, or reg, public repository, so. Do we have any questions as far as that goes, Sim?
Uh, no, no. I was able to follow what you, what you've been doing.
Ah, good stuff. Uh, the last thing, let's see what we have here, if we can. Run through a really quick security context. Yeah, I think we can, um, do you have a few minutes?
Yeah, 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 I'm on board, yeah, yeah, it's no problem.
Yeah, we can run through this, it's pretty quick, security context is going to be. What the commands inside of your pod that you create. Uh, what user they get ran with. Uh, by default, they are ran as a root user. And the only thing you gotta remember, the, you, like, you can see. The commands that are being run inside of a pod that we create. Uh, is, uh, so. If it's obfuscated, right, so. On this level, we cannot see. If we're inside the pod, we cannot see the outside world. There is a way we can change that, but for now, just think about it. The container, you're only in the namespace of that container itself. Uh, when you're on the host system, which is in this case control plane. We are outside of the pod. That, that sees all of the pods. So therefore, we are able to see the processes that are ran inside of those pods as well. So we'll go through this, um, and you'll see what I mean, actually, they have. Okay. Describe, I think they already have the pod here. Okay, so they have the pod here. And it is running the command sleep forty eight hundred. So on the host, we can do a PS dash EF. And you can see right here, root. Running sleep forty eight hundred. So that is, that is that, uh, pod running this, uh, command here. So we can see if we had other pods. We can see what they're doing as well on the host. Because they're given a process ID, there's going to be a different process ID here. Then it is inside of that, uh, pod. But it is the same process. So. What is the user? Used to execute a sleep process within the pod? So the way we can check that, we can do a K. Exec. The pod, well, it's always going to be a pod, so we're gonna. Our pod is going to be a boot to sleeper. And the command that we want to run is who am I? Yep, so. As you can see, it is running as root inside of there. We can actually do it inside of there, we can do a PS as well. And you can see. Still PS dash EF. You can see it's ran as root. Sleep forty eight hundred, the process ID is one. Um. But out here is six thousand eight hundred thirty six. But it's the same exact process, so. Let's go ahead and hit root on there. Edit the pod of boot sleeper to run the sleep process with the user ID ten ten. No, only make this trees, no matter if I the name or image of the pod, so. Want to change the security context of this pod. I found that it is impossible, well, it's probably not impossible, the. Impossible should not actually be a word within, um. Computer science, because there's always another way that you can do something, so. What I have found is, um. I couldn't figure out a way to do this without recreating the pod completely, so. Let's do a. You know, we want to make sure that I sleep forty eight hundred. So what I want to do is K delete. Pod. Want to sleeper. It's going to, it has to kill that process first and within the pod. And then delete the pod, you can do a slash force, but there is a chance that the. That command does not get killed and. Like, when you do a dash dash force, it will immediately kill that pod. But there's a chance that that command does. But there's a chance that that command doesn't get killed and it stays running on the system forever. In this case, it's just asleep forty eight hundred, so it sleeps for, I don't know, how many minutes is that? Eight minutes? Yeah. Alright, so, and then it would just terminated anyways. So let's go ahead and K, uh, in case of power, we wanna do a run pod. It's gonna be the name we're going to sleeper. With the sleeper, uh, dash dash, we wanna have the command on, oh, well, we want the image first here. Um, what was that image on there? Our image was a boot two. Boot two, then command is gonna be sleep. Forty eight hundred. And I don't actually wanna run this command. I need the dry run. And I want it to output as YAM. Okay. Oh, that's where I messed up. So when you do a run command, it's always gonna be pods. You don't need to specify that it is a pod here. Do it again. Alright, so that looks good. The command sleep forty eight hundred. Uh, went to sleeper is our name, and it is a pod. Okay, so they want us to change it to also use the security cut. So let's go ahead and pipe this into a file. Uh, sleeper that YAM. Uh, so when you pop, wanna pipe it into a file, you have to specify the dry run to be client. And I think I have to actually put an equal sign there. Yeah, I do. This is the one command where you have to have, this is the one option that you have to have an equal sign. It will not work. So there we go. Now we can do a vim. All the other ones, as you can see, you can just leave a space and then specify the argument. But in this case, you have to, um, you have to put an equal sign. So let's go ahead and vim sleeper. YAM, and we wanna add the security context, and we saw that earlier. Uh, we can also sup. If T context. Here it is. Uh, so it's, okay, so what, two things I have to mention here. When we're doing security context, uh, you can specify on the container level. Or you can specify it on the pod level. So here, when it's under spec, it is on the pod level. If you have it within the container, it is on the container level. Uh, the more granular, the, the context, uh, is is gonna take precedence. So let me explain that. Uh, the security context on the container, because it is more specific, it will override any security context on the pod. So even though this is specifying run as user one thousand, in here, if we were to specify in here, run as user ten twenty, it would run as user ten twenty for this container, for sec, sec context demo. Um, and then whatever other container you create, the security context on it will take precedence. If there's nothing mentioned on those containers, it will use the pod level security context. If there's nothing on the pod level, it will use the default, which is gonna be root. So let's go ahead and, uh, create this. Uh, in our case, it is asking, uh, edit the pod to run sleeper process with user ID ten ten. It's telling us to edit the pod. So I'm just gonna do it on that pod level, which means under spec. Let's grab the security context. Over here. And we just wanna change the run as user to be the one ten ten to be the user. Okay, that looks good to me. Let's go ahead, K, create. Dash F sleeper. Dash. Alright, a pod is created. And let's do that same command we did earlier. Okay, exec. Going to sleeper, who am I? Excuse me. As you can see here, the, yes, it cannot find the name, but it is trying to look for ten ten. Uh, the user ID ten ten, or actually, sorry. It cannot find the name, so it cannot list who it is, but it is running as user ID ten ten. So we are good to go on this one. And of course, let's do a PS dash EF. Out here, as you can see, it does list as well that it is using user ten ten. Alright, let's keep on going. We'll, we'll fly through this one. Um, the pod definition file name multi pod is given with what you, let's go ahead and read that file. Vim multi pod. Alright, so what I mentioned earlier, Sim, I think you can answer these actually. Um, so with what user are the process in the web container started with? So here's our container web. I'm gonna highlight the whole container for you.
Yeah, so this is, that's user one, uh, for the web container is, uh, in the container, we're using user one O two.
Correct. So the next one is for the sidecar here. What user do you think this is gonna be ran as?
Uh, that's gonna be ran as, it looks like it's ran as, uh, user one O one.
Uh, yeah, I think I, I'm saying, I think it's because, um, I might have small text that you might not be able to read it. But it's, uh, you read this number up here?
Well, I guess, I guess it, would it be still? I guess it's still under the context of the container, so it would be user one O two.
No, 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 no. Sorry, you, you were right. You were right. Um, I mislegited, but it's, it says one thousand and one as well, I should say. It just, you may not be reading it correctly.
Yeah, I said one thousand one. Uh, but yeah, I know that the, so that's on the pod level, right?
Yeah, so as you can see, so each, each one of these dashes signifies a new container. So this is one container. This is the second container, uh, cause it's a list. Uh, that's what the dash is significant. It's a, a new object in the list. Uh, so because this one, we're not specifying a secure contact runner's user, is gonna use whatever is specified on the pod level, which is down here. As you can see, this is above the containers. So this is for the whole pod. So he's gonna use this user here, one thousand and one. If this wasn't specified, then it'll be root user. But since it is specified, it is gonna be one thousand and one.
Got it. Yeah, that's what, that was my initial thought.
Alright, uh, yeah, yeah, you were right. Uh, and good job, man. Thank you. So next up, we're gonna update the pod, boot sleep it around us, root user with the system time capabilities. So capabilities is a whole different thing. So capabilities is gonna be, what do you wanna allow this container to be able to do on the host machine? Uh, by default, these, um, they don't have, I don't, I don't wanna say they don't have any capabilities, but they are very limited. Uh, by default, you cannot do most things. You, you cannot access the host machine from the container. But you can change this. Uh, in this case, they want us to set the capability to change this, or I'm not sure if it's to change or just to see the system time. Uh, you may be able to actually edit it. Uh, but, uh, just in the sense of, uh, uh, how to change that capability. Let's go over to our documentation. Then we can type in capabilities. Uh, something else that you need to know is capabilities can only be done on the container level. Uh, you cannot do that on the pod level.
Got it, got it.
So let's go over here, create security context, and we're gonna look for key abilities.
It says it right there, set the security context for a pod.
We, let's jump to, no, so we won't have access to this. So let's just go back to control F. Um, oh, you were talking about here? Is this, okay, perfect. So capabilities for a container. So yeah, so with this, we can only do it on the container level. Um, let's read this real quick. You don't include the capabilities. This is where we add the capabilities. I was curious what capabilities are set by default. Since we are over the time, I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll do this research on my own later on. So let's go ahead and, um, we need to add these keep, yeah, well, we need the system time, so we can go ahead and copy this. And we can edit that out. Uh, as you can see, always make note of how this is, uh, indented is gonna be on the same level as the name of your container. So come over here, it's gonna be on this level, and they want us to do this to their which container. Uh, they do, oh, so we wanna do this to a boot to sleeper, not this phone. So let's go ahead and vim sleeper YAM. And container is right there. Insert. Now let's go ahead and just to here. And this first and then paste. Okay, perfect. And we don't need net admin capabilities. Let's go ahead and get rid of that. System time. Okay. It's good to me. So let's do a K replace in this case. Dash dash force it, dash F. And sleeper. Yep, we're second. You can always add, um, grace period equals zero, so it does not gracefully. This is of course, if you're doing it in a testing environment, don't do this in production, obviously. Cause there's certain process that you want them to exit gracefully. But, uh, in this case, you can add grace period zero to speed this up. And it will just, it will just pretty much force, uh, kill any process. Alright, uh, it has been replaced. And I'm curious if you'll tell us the capabilities here, K. Describe. To sleeper. Use our container spec. I don't see system timing. I mean, it did say a way that you can check this is is, uh, go into it and cat status. It's in bitmap version. You can go through this and actually see how this bitmap looks depending. It will tell you, so this bitmap actually tells you what our capability is. You just have to read it by bits. Uh, we're not gonna get into that right now, but you have a way to check that if you need to. In this sense, um, we have said it. And it is running, is it running as user? It wants us to run as root user. Um, I don't think, hold on, let's do a vim again. No, cause we need to. I think we need to remove this. Run as user, but let me actually check. Does that work? Yeah, so we do need to remove it. Cause this capability is only given to a root user, so we need to change that, the context, cause we're not specifying here. In fact, we can actually do that. We can, um, there's two ways you can do this. You can either remove it up here, or you can add it.
Yeah, could you put, could you put it above that in order for it to Okay, I guess that'd be designated for the pod level and it can.
Yeah, exactly. You're right. So up here is designated for the pod level. If we specify it here on the container, it will overwrite whatever is, uh, up there. So we could just, uh, go ahead and, uh, insert. And, uh, over here. And run. As user. Let's go ahead and do replace again. This time I'm also gonna add grace period. Zero. As you can see, it immediately deletes it, but it did not wanna create it. Doesn't like, so it wants, um, integer type. What is the root user gonna be? Is it gonna be one? Yeah, one, one, it's beautiful text. I think root user ID would vary, that's the issue. Root user ID would vary, that's the issue. Slash, let's see, slash PWD. For this one, I wanted to check, where is our root? Our root user ID is actually zero. And that's to. Same command on inside of the pot, cat, oh, deleted the pot, so we're not gonna be able to do that. Uh, let's just do zero, and if that does not work. Then. We'll have to go ahead and just delete their security context above, so let's go ahead and uh change this. Zero. I wanna keep read this time, cause the pod does not exist. Should have been. Okay, so it is created. Now I wanna do. Insert, and I wanna do a, who am I? Well, it is, so. The root uh user ID is zero, so in case you ever wanted to change that, so let's see. Does work. Okay. Uh, now I'll do the part to also make use of the net admin, so you know, it'll be simple, just vim sleeper. Excuse me, and just add. Net admin here.
Yeah, I wanna say that the documentation has net admin in the.
Yeah, but in this case is.
Has like a, I think it has more than one uh capability listed in the eh, the documentation.
You're right. You're right, you, we can go over there and copy it, and it's exactly the same thing, it's asking for, in, in that documentation, it was net admin and system time to begin with. Right, we can also just add it here, just type it in net admin, and you just separate these by commas, make sure you have your quotations, that's it. And if you wanna add any other capabilities, you just keep adding them commas and whatever you wanna add. Uh, K replace a uh grace period zero on this one, and that should work this time. And I capabilities have changed. Alright. That's it. We're all set. That was the last question, uh, just to recap, well, we just went over the security context, which uh specifies. The user that is gonna be running the commands on each of these pods. Uh, and you can also give it permissions to the host system by specifying its capabilities. The capabilities, I have not verified this, but they seem to only relate to the root user. I believe they would also relate to another user, if you have both the same user on both uh. The pod and the host machine, but it has to be, you have to have the user in both, both places, cause the capabilities are attached to the user. I have not verified this, but that's, that's what I am observing. Uh, so keep, take that with a grain of salt. The user account is, is by default root, and remember that it is. Depending on how you specify it on the pot level or container level. Uh, it, it does matter, um, container level, the more specific level will overwrite. The more broad level, which is gonna be your pod, uh, any questions on that?
No, no.
Alright, my man, uh, this has been a great one, you're the last one standing, I, I appreciate you, man. Uh, for sticking out, uh, this helps me learn, you know, like, we're all learning this stuff together, so. It, it, I am grateful for everybody that comes through, uh, I'm grateful to the people over at the. Over the, the black cloud geeks, cause they, they do these things pretty much every day. Uh, I, I join our PJ's classes every Wednesday, and he does amazing job explaining a lot of this stuff. Uh, network policy is next on this, uh, he, he went over there last week, I'm gonna try my best to. Uh, do justice, um, uh, I need, I need a little bit more practice on that stuff. But yeah, with that, we'll conclude our session for tonight, uh, if you're watching this on the replay. And you found this information valuable, uh, please consider liking and subscribing, I appreciate every one of you. Uh, if you don't, like, if you don't uh find it valuable, and you think uh. You have some suggestions how I can do this better, you know, you can drop them or give me a dislike, show where you wanna do this, uh, and. If you are looking to join our groups, we do this every Monday at eight PM Eastern. And yeah, the more the merrier, uh, we don't wanna keep learning this stuff in silos, uh, wanna be able to bounce these ideas off each other and. Get a firmer grasp on it. Uh, I will be taking my CK this month, so wish me luck. Asa da da, thank you for watching, and uh, I will see you on the next one.